And I'd like to call this meeting of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie.
Yeah.
Councilman. Chairman Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Gardner.
Yeah.
Chief Johnson. Mrs. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. Heinmann. Mr. McCauley.
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
All right, I see we do not have any minutes, so we will go to the preliminary plat- Oak Creek plat number three. It was held several times. What we got going?
Yes, sir. You recall that this was being held primarily to deal with some minor items, but most importantly, to deal with the question about whether or not the there was sufficient water pressure to meet the fire department's guidelines and provide sufficient fire protection for this proposed looped street. The Water Board, as I understand it, has been working pretty diligently on that. And just this morning, I heard from Buddy Buckner, who said that they have solved that. Now, as you can see, Chief Johnson is not present, and he has not had a chance to look at those specifications from the Water Board. So at this point, I would say you certainly could approve it with conditions, since it seems like we've reached some resolution, but maybe in deference to Chief Johnson, give him some chance to look at it and see if that's sufficient.
All right, so when you-
You would need the applicant's permission to hold it over again. If you don't have their permission to do that, then you'll need to deny it.
You have permission.
Okay.
I think it should be held until the next meeting.
All right, there's a motion to hold. There's a second, all in favor of holding. Signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. I believe it's going to be held. All right, let's look at item number- Yes, sir, sir.
Just, as always, we always hit, you know, housekeeping matter, we're on tape. And if we're on, that's a wrong term these days, and we're digital, and we're taped. If you could make sure you turn your mics on when you make a motion or speak. Second was Ms. Carpenter.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, I would also ask, since we have a substitute secretary today, if you could certainly recognize who made the motions and the seconds-
I will do it.
Just for her benefit, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. I will do it. All right, we have item number two. The, can somebody read that in for me? Ms. Carpenter, could you please read that for me? I believe we want to read it in first, is what you want to do? And then substitute?
Mr. Smith, I'll be glad to clarify what's going on, if we could, real quick. If you'll recall, you had a, for several meetings now, we've had this item of a request for zoning of property that is outside the city limits but proposed for annexation off of Jensen Road. It's the Horace Davis property. We've had two committee meetings on this. Last meeting, they came back with a proposal that included a sketch plan and a zoning that seemed to be a little more palatable, especially to the neighborhood. The plan at the last meeting was that we would try to have a public hearing on this change of zoning, or change in the proposal for this meeting. We procedurally did not quite get that, and we also did not quite get it in for advertising in time, just because of where your meetings fall and the advertising scheduled by the paper. So what I'm going to ask you to do today is, what you have is a resolution that reflects the proposed changes and the change in the legal descriptions, and asks that somebody would, you have a motion on the floor, it's been held several meetings, make somebody make a motion by simply reading this resolution and making a motion to substitute this resolution for the one that's on the floor. Okay, you would need a vote on that motion. Just give me a second and a vote. And then if you would properly hold that, and then we would need just a simple motion to set the public hearing for the 17th of September.
Okay. Will you read it then? Or you want it, would you?
If I understood that, we need to first make a motion to substitute.
Basically, in the same motion, you're reading this in as well. So you could, like to make a motion to substitute this resolution, end up reading that, you would say so moved, substitute, or the motion on the floor.
I'll probably read it then.
Yes, please.
Oh, let's read it then.
Can you read it in, Ms. Carpenter?
Zoning request to R3, B1, and M1 County Road 4 at Jensen Road, Horace H. Davis, petitioner August 20th, 2015. Whereas Horace H. Davis has applied for zoning of the property shown in Attachment A, and whereas the property to be zoned is located outside the city limits of the southeast and southwest corners of the Jensen Road and Ataga County Road intersection. And whereas the petitioners wish to zone the property to R3, Single Family Residential, B1 Neighborhood Commercial, and M1 Light Industrial. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held, or will be held, was held, was held, by the Prattville Planning Commission on September 17th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the zoning of said property to R3, B1, and M1 upon its annexation into the Prattville city limits. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to substitute the first this for the resolution that's on the floor? Is that correct?
So moved.
Okay.
I think that in reading it, that is the motion.
That is the motion, okay. And so there's a second. Now can we vote?
Second.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Carpenter and second by Ms. Carpenter.
Right. All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand. And that is all. We got it? Okay. Now, can we have a motion to hold this?
The substitute motion is now replaced the one that was originally on the floor, so I would ask that you hold this one until the 17th.
Can I have a motion to hold?
I move we hold this request and have, hold a public hearing on September 17th.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Do we need to have another motion? We good? All right. Let's go to item number three.
Would you mind reading that in? Resolution preliminary plat, time extension River Chase North Plat 7A, August 20th, 2015. Whereas CNE of Prattville LLC is the owner of River Chase North Plat 7A. And whereas a preliminary plat for the development was approved on August 16th, 2012. And whereas the preliminary plat was approved for a time extension on September 19th, 2013, and September 18th, 2014. And whereas the developer has requested for a time extension for one additional year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its approval to extend the time of completion for the approved preliminary plat of River Chase North Plat 7A. Now therefore be it further resolved that any and all contingencies since of August 16th, 2012 preliminary plat approval remain in effect. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Thank you. Who wants to go? What you got?
Just to remind us where we are. This is the north phase of River Chase North. We originally had the street going back across, but it was revised to take it back in and tie back into the development to the north. This street has already been built. And we're just trying to extend this so that we can find the point in time when we're ready to build it, which I hope is soon. The other one that I'm going to bring up, they're telling me they're ready to build it very soon, but I would assume this is going to be later in the year.
All right. Mr. Duke?
We have, over the last couple of years, maybe longer than that, some cases where there have been little benefits to these, to a certain subdivision, seeing no issue with an extension of time. The code has not changed in reference to this subdivision. The extension of Riverton Drive is what we're looking for in this area, eventually to connect on the southern end of Glenbrook. So we would, we certainly have no issue with approving this extension for another year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke? Any questions? Okay. And then motion and second? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Thank you, sir. All right. And this is, Mr. Mayor, would you read in number four for us?
I certainly will.
Thank you. It's preliminary plat, time extension, Pecan Grove, subdivision plat one, August 20th, 2015. Whereas CNE of Prattville LLC is the owner of Pecan Grove, subdivision plat one. Whereas a preliminary plat for the development was approved on August 16th, 2012. Whereas a preliminary plat was approved for a time extension on September 19th, 2013, and September 18th, 2014. And whereas the developer has requested for a time extension of one additional year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its approval to extend the time of completion for the approved preliminary plat of Pecan Grove, subdivision plat one. Now therefore be it further resolved that any and all contingencies of August 16th, 2012 preliminary plat approval remain in effect. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Thank you. Your second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Y'all got anything to say on? Go ahead. Yeah.
This is Ridgewood Road that goes right by Matt Gray Softball Park. And it goes by the city's complex here. I believe you house the horticulturist in that particular area. This is the very north westernmost section of Camilla Estates, and this is where we were sitting up for our nine lots along Ridgewood. It is my understanding that they are very close to building this. I think I might have said that last year, too, but I'll be honest.
Okay.
Who, who wants that?
This is Sonny and Chandler. CNE of Prattville.
That's CNE, Sonny and Chandler.
Any question? Mr. Duke?
This one doesn't provide much in the way of benefit directly to the city or resolve any type of problem, but we do not see any reason for objection.
Thank you, sir.
Do you object to this?
All right, any discussion? Any discussion? I guess we can call a question, and all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Let's move. Yes, sir. We're going to move on to five, and it looks like it's a simple replat, from what I can tell, if they're Mountain Lakes. Are we combining into one? Are we combining, are we, what are we doing? Talk to me.
My name's Larry Jarvis. That'll work. This is off of Gin Chop Hill and Mount Lakeport, Mountain Lane. We've got two lots, Mr. and Ms. Nichols own these two lots, and they have a house on the north lot, and they're wanting to put a detached garage on this vacant lot. So the planning commission says we had to make this one lot before we can do the garage, so that's why we're planning.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Jarvis? So their house is right there? Okay, I got it. Any questions? I think we're good. We can put that down. All right, Mr. Duke?
Just to echo what Mr. Jarvis said, that the owners wish to add an accessory structure, which can't be a standalone structure on a lot, and they're willing to comply with where that accessory structure needs to be as far as being behind the rear building line of the house. The only thing they don't have is one lot to comply with. So they're asking to basically join these two lots together legally. No objection.
Thank you. Any question? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign? Let's go on to number six.
Mr. Smith, I'm not sure that we got the motion on that.
Oh, well, did we? Okay. Let's back up, and I will- Is there any motion to move those into one lot? Sometimes I try to move too fast.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed replat from two lots to one.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign? We're good? All right. Next thing is, what you got there for us? Proposed amendment?
Yes, sir. In your packets we sent out, or I sent out a memorandum concerning a couple of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first would be amendment to Article Six, Section 63, having to do with swimming and wading pools. This one, resolution looks complicated, but to put it simply, we have two codes that are adopted by the city which create a conflict. We have one code that requires a four-foot fence, the other code requires a five-foot fence. What I am proposing is that you remove a section from the zoning ordinance, propose a removal, excuse me, an amendment to remove a section from the zoning ordinance so that the conflict goes away. Over time, the city's zoning ordinance, if you go back to when it was first adopted, it probably was the closest thing to a building code that the city had. And so many times, things that should properly be in a building code were put in the zoning ordinance. Now, from an enforcement standpoint, that makes it a little more difficult, because you generally have to have a little higher level of proof. You can't amend the ordinance very easily. So it's probably not the best place, but that's where they put it at the time, because it seemed like the best spot. In this case, I'm asking that you remove any reference to the height of a fence or how a pool is protected, and allow the building code to be that controlling, that controlling code. That code changes over time. It changes as industry standard changes, as codes are updated nationally, that building code will be updated. Whereas your zoning ordinance is a fairly static document, and it's harder to amend it. As you know, it requires almost a 90-day process to amend the zoning ordinance. So what you have before you is a, an amendment that eliminates, if you remember the memorandum that I sent out to you, eliminates anything having to do with the height of a fence or the requirement that the pool be protected by a fence. And that requirement will now reside in what's known as the International Property Maintenance Code. Be glad to answer any questions. Let me back up as well. You may also recall that to make a change to the zoning ordinance, just like a change to the zoning map, it requires a recommendation from this board. So that's basically what this resolution reflects. Not trying to get ahead of you, I've just prepared this if this is something you want to pursue today.
If the city really wanted five-foot-high fences, what would it do?
If we really wanted five-foot-high fences, we would amend the building code to match that. What you're finding from the professionals who deal with this on a daily basis, which would be your building official, your code enforcement inspector, is that that's a non-standard height, that five foot. And it's also, in the building code, they're trying to do the same thing in the building code, which is to keep out basically children that might wander into the, and fall into the pool, to make it difficult to actually get into the pool area. So there are provisions in the International Property Maintenance Code that do the same thing, and actually do it a little better than the way it's written up in the zoning ordinance currently. What I am asking you to preserve is the setback lines that are required, and that's, that is properly in your zoning ordinance, that this pool has to be at least 10 feet away from the property line. And that is maintained.
All right.
Glad to answer any questions.
First thing and foremost, when you read it in.
If this is what you wish to-
To-
Make sure I'm clear, this is not something you have to do. This is what I'm asking you to do. And what we're asking you to do is to start the process by making this recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Does anybody have issues with recommending this to the city council?
Pretty straightforward.
All right. The resolution, proposed amendment, Article Six, Prattville Zoning Ordinance, August 20th, 2015. Whereas the Prattville Planning Commission may formulate and recommend changes to the zoning ordinance of Prattville, Alabama. And whereas the zoning ordinance, Section 63, Swimming and Wading Pools, establish regulations for placement and configuration of pools constructed in the city of Prattville. And whereas Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Prattville adopts the International Residence Code 2009 Edition and the International Property Maintenance Code 2009 Edition as the city's building code. And whereas the building codes provides for the proper design and protection of public and private pools, and whereas the required fence height listed in Section 63 conflicts with the adopted building code. And whereas the regulations for design and protection of swimming pools should be simplified and standardized by amending Section 63. And whereas the public hearing for the proposed amendment for the zoning ordinance was properly advertised and constructed by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on October 15th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends that the City of Prattville Council amend Article Six, Section 63 of the zoning ordinance of Prattville, Alabama, to read Article Six, Sections Three, Swimming and Wading Pools. Swimming and wading pools with a depth of one foot or more in any portion of the pool and not located within a permanently and completely walled structure shall be constructed no closer than 10 feet from any property line. Be it further resolved that this resolution upon adoption should be transmitted to the Secretary of Planning Commission to the Prattville City Council. And so moved.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this, or what do we need to do now? That was long.
If you would, if somebody would care to make a motion to hold that and set a public hearing for October the 15th, that would be the proper way to go about it.
Thank you.
I move we hold this proposed amendment till public hearing on October-
15th.
15th.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Or let's say, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Thank you. We will move on to the next item, and that is another long resolution. What do you want, we know about this one?
Yes, sir. This one is a, McCauley, I'm not sure if you'll recall this one, you may, and Ms. Carpenter-
I do.
And Mr. Nelson, too, so, and Reuben, and Mr. Gardner as well, because they were all on the board when this was originally taken up. I am unable to explain exactly why we may have some problem with this, actually having been adopted properly back in 1999. As you all know, it is a needed clause, and this clause deals with how often someone can reapply for a, the zoning on the same piece of property. Those of you who've been on the commission for a long time, as we recall, probably around this time, we had several repeat applications for one or two particular pieces of property. That certainly could happen again, and frankly, it's not your time, it's not the council's time or staff time, is the major motivation for setting some time limit. The motivation is the distress, the concern by the surrounding properties. Imagine you come down, you speak your mind on a proposed zoning, and you feel like it's been settled case, and then it keeps coming back up again and again. So what was considered by the commission at the time, and certainly as far as I understand, approved by the city council at the time, was what's laid out in this resolution you have before you, which is Article Four, Section 43. This would be an amendment to add this section talking about reapplication. And you'll recall that there is a 365-day waiting cooling offer, or whatever you want to call it. You cannot reapply for 365 days after the council takes action. If you withdraw your application, of course, you could come back, but before, if you withdraw before there's some action. You'll also recall that as a part of the process to develop this section, the commission saw fit to put in a clause that talked about if conditions change, that if there was legitimate reason for a rezoning or a zoning hearing, that someone had to go through a two-step process. They first had to apply and prove that there was, that conditions had changed, and they had to come out, they had to come out for a public hearing, and the commission could allow for it to go forward, or could elect not to. And if it was allowed to go forward, then they could apply for a rezoning. So I ask that you move forward with this, to try to get this back into the zoning ordinance, so that we can assure that we don't run into similar situations. We haven't run into that since that time, but there's always one on the horizon somewhere.
I think the rule has served us well, hasn't it?
Yes, sir, I agree it has served us.
And we're revising this. Why, was it not in correctly, or?
It is unclear to the city attorney in the, whether or not it was actually properly adopted.
Okay.
There is a process by which ordinances have to be adopted under state law, and all of the steps necessary to make sure that that was adopted may not have been followed. We cannot determine that for certain, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
And therefore we will, this is insurance. I think I explained it a little bit in the memorandum, be glad to go into that, but I think that's probably-
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to call this, this is just some good housekeeping, and I would like to go and introduce it.
Well, I would love for you to read that.
Well, thank you. Proposed amendment to Article Four, Prattville Zoning Ordinance, August 20th, 2015. Whereas the Prattville Planning Commission may formulate or recommend changes to the zoning ordinance of Prattville, Alabama. Whereas modifications to the procedure for map amendments are required to establish a timeframe for requests to rezone a parcel of property. Whereas modifications are necessary to limit and reduce the impact of repeated rezoning requests on the surrounding neighborhoods. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance was properly advertised and conducted by the Prattville Planning Commission on October 15th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends that the Prattville City Council amend the zoning ordinance of Prattville, Alabama, to add Article Four, Section 43, reapplication. The parcel of property or portions of a parcel of property has been considered by the Prattville City Council for rezoning. Neither the City Council nor the Prattville Planning Commission may consider another application to change the zoning district classification of the same parcel of property or a portion of that same parcel of property for a period of 365 calendar days from the day the city council takes action on the rezoning. During the 365 day, during the 365 period, the owner or other party owning a legal interest in the property may request a public hearing before the Prattville Planning Commission to present facts demonstrating that conditions as they existed at the time of the previous request have changed significantly to warrant consideration of a rezoning request prior to the expiration of the 365-day period. Such public hearing may be advertised in the legal section of a paper of local circulation at least seven days before the date of the hearing. The planning commission may grant a waiver by resolution of the commission. Such resolution must be approved by six affirmative votes and contain a statement detailing what conditions that have changed since the previous rezoning request. Be it further resolved that this resolution- Be it further resolved that this resolution upon its adoption may be transmitted by the Secretary of the Planning Commission to the Propeller City Council. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. And as, we need to hold this.
Yes, sir. Same, same procedure as the last one. If someone would make a motion to hold until the public hearing on October the fifteenth.
All right. May I have a motion to hold?
Thank you. And so we will put Mr. McCauley as a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And Mr. Nelson as the person, Mr. D- uh, thank you. Any opposed?
All right. Mr. Duke, do we have anything else? You gave us some reading materials.
Yes, sir. I.
Wouldn't we like to discuss?
Some insomnia material. I apologize for that, but we, we hope to do that more often. Let's just start with, the item may have been mentioned in the memorandum, but was not, um, was not actually included. I apologize. I think most of you got a copy of this at the time we handed it out. I need to know your intentions for some type of movement on this. It would be my recommendation that this board consider after a public hearing, this as a, an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. Now, make sure I'm clear on that. You can adopt this in, in total, or you can adopt portions of it as an amendment. Just if you have not had a chance to review it, I would, would like to see if we can move forward on this at the next meeting. So if somebody would let me know either now or between now and the September meeting.
Did, now, did we all get a copy of the, I mean, I know there were subcommittee meetings on that, but I didn't see the final.
Okay.
Right.
We, we handed it out at the meeting, Mr. Smith.
Okay. I might not have gotten it.
Could you send me an electronic copy?
I will send everybody an electronic copy of it.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Whiteside, that we have not mentioned, is Mr. Gary Whiteside. He was representative for District Five. The city council has been appointed in, in Mr. Bowles' place as, as a council representative. And so he was unable to be here today, but we'll make sure he gets a copy as well.
Okay.
But again, that does not have to be adopted in total, but there is some very good work here. There are some very good proposals having to do with infill housing, having to do with transportation and corridor development on Martin Luther King. I think it would be important for this commission to consider that as, in some ways, an amendment to the comprehensive plan, so. And Mr. Smith, if I might, I'm sorry.
Procedure for adopting or adding to the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir. Um. Requires six firm votes, and you can have that vote after a public hearing, properly advertised public hearing. So.
City council has to bless it as well?
No, uh. We, we don't often talk about the comprehensive plans, only periodically, but if y'all recall, the planning commission by statute is actually, primarily was set up as a body to deal with the master plan. And as a part of that, in state law, you are the entity that is the sole adopter of that, as a sole required adopter of that. What we've done by practice, starting back in ninety-six, and then with the twenty-ten plan, was we have asked the city council to adopt it by resolution. They're basically affirming it. Okay? For it to be basically the city's plan, it doesn't require council adoption, but why would you not want the council to adopt, they're the body that's appointing, appropriating money, they are the body that's making policy. They need to be the group that agrees with that. So we, we would hope to get it adopted here, but also get them to adopt it as well.
All right. Do we need to put it on there for the October meeting, or September?
We can, we can put it, we'll have enough time because the advertising requirements are not as, as lengthy. There's, it's just the seven-day requirement. We would do longer, but we don't have to do the, the twenty-one days or at lea- for the, yeah, the twenty-one days essentially that you have to do for a rezoning. So you could wait and tell me in September you wanted to, to deal with it in October. So we would have all those public hearings at that October meeting.
Okay.
The, the main thing I would say is if there are sections of this that you do not feel should be a part of the plan, or just pieces of it that should be a part of the plan, that's really the, the question.
Okay.
If you wish to adopt it in total, then that's easy. It's kind of like when we look at, at the International Building Code, we don't adopt it in total most of the time. There's usually some local amendment to that. So you need to, to take a look. As it stands now, it's just a, a planning document. It has no force of, no force of law.
So are there any pieces of it that would change what's in the current comprehensive plan? And assuming that there may be, do you, your resolution supersede?
Yes. The, the best way to put it is this, this provides detail that the, that the, let's say, comprehensive plan was a forty thousand foot look at the whole city. And these neighborhood plans were basically designed to be a follow-on to what was already done in the comp plan. In fact, this neighborhood was specifically looked, you know, set up to be a, a, a neighborhood plan. And so this has a, a great deal more detail and a closer look at the area than the comp plan did. So there should be compatibility there. I, I would say there's really nothing there that's going to be in conflict. The question is, how much of this do you want to be policy? Mr. Chair, if I might, a couple of other items of interest. Certainly not going to go over Supreme Court case. I'm not a lawyer, don't want to be. But everything we do in this room has something to do with law and these, these guys, this nine wise folks on the.
Do you have another co- uh, Mr. Gardner, did you get a copy of that?
We can share. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona is now a landmark case. It is a continuation of a, a series of cases over the last twenty years where the Supreme Court has, by, by some folks would say erode, I would use the term modify, the ability of local governments to regulate speech. And what, and specifically what they're saying is that anytime we make a, a statement about a sign, okay, how a sign, um, anytime we make, regulate a sign based on what is on that sign, not the, not the area, not the height, the setback, but if we make a distinction between signs based on what's printed on that sign, or the content of the sign is, then we are violating First Amendment. So, um, you can read the specifics of the Gilbert case. Gilbert, Arizona is a small town, roughly equivalent to Propeller, had a, has a sign ordinance. They tried to enforce against a, a church that was not following the ordinance. The church decided that they had a, a nice case. Other people, as these cases are, are apt to do, join, were joined by other interests, and it made it all the way to Supreme Court. The end result is the Supreme Court says, as I just mentioned, that if, if the sign ordinance is not content neutral, meaning that if, as Justice Thomas said, if you have to look at the sign to determine how to regulate it, then it is a violation of First Amendment and unconstitutional. I don't have a copy of our sign ordinance with me, but I would ask you to take a look at the sections in the zoning ordinance which deal with signs, and you will find in there that it is necessary to read the sign to determine how to regulate it. So we are going to make some proposals. We had a, we had a proposal several years ago that was basically content neutral. This has been a trend that we've seen coming. We've, we tried to get ahead of that trend with a proposal. We will be reviving that for your consideration. Mr. Gardner, I believe you were on the committee that Mr. Bowles.
I was, Mr. Duke.
And we'll, we'll try to get that going. May I ask the Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of in a different position than they were as far as staffing and ability to help out, to provide some input on these regulations? We've always found that regulations are, are, we get the best result when looking at regulations if we include the regulated community. And the Chamber of Commerce provides us that avenue, so we'll be looking very closely at that. Be honest with you, the, in our ordinance, the most impacted sign would be those that talk about political campaigns. If you're trying to go content neutral, you have to include that as well. So whereas we make serious distinctions about off-site signs and political signs and identification signs and other, I mean, there's a whole section of our ordinance that says, essentially, if you have to read, that you have to read the sign to determine how to regulate it, and that's going to be a problem. So anyway, that's for your information at this point. We'll be making some proposals on how to deal with that. Also, in the, in your last packet was Act twenty-fourteen dash thirteen, which, working with Maxwell Air Force Base, their campus, excuse me, their base planner at the moment to try to determine whether or not this affects us in any way. This was a, a law proposed by Senator Dahl, requiring that local government consult prior to adoption, consult military bases nearby prior to adoption of any land use changes. That's zoning subdivision regulations and like. The, the distance in here is two miles by our calculation. There's only one small area of Propeller that might be within two miles of the fence at Maxwell, but we're, we're likely to try to comply just by some kind of memorandum of understanding that we consult with them anyway. So I, I think there's, there's some usefulness in that. We also want to know where they're planning to fly and what kind of changes they're making to their flight plans and all that. So I think it's an opportunity for some dialogue. But the other one is one that we know will apply to us. This was an act from this year, twenty fifteen dash three sixty-one. This act primarily deals with police jurisdiction, but at the, about halfway through, it also deals with Title eleven, Chapter fifty-two, thirty, which deals with subdivision regulations and what we call the planning jurisdiction. It says, in brief, it says that you can only change your planning jurisdiction once a year. So if the city annexes property, which extends that three-mile planning jurisdiction further out, that you can only extend that in your subdivision regulation jurisdiction, you can only extend that out once a year. And that's Jan- in January, but you have to give notice of that January effective date in October, the prior October. So we've, we've just made, excuse me, there are some annexations that are, excuse me, pending before the city council at the moment. One of those that was just, just adopted last week, a five-acre tract, will push your jurisdiction further out just a little bit. If we're going to make that change this year, then you'll need to publicize that in October. It's my recommendation you don't change it because it primarily pushes your planning jurisdiction further and this one that I was talking about pushes it further in the IP property. Nobody's going to develop there. You can wait on that one, but be aware that you're not going to see your jurisdiction automatically extended except for once a year. And again, it's not really automatically extended. You have to state that you're extending that. And you can, you have to state it in October, then it becomes effective the following January.
What kind of situation would, would we be in where this is an issue for us?
I, primarily if the, the city begins annexing further to the, to the west or to the north, then, then it would be really relevant at that point. Because you'll want to see, as we did back in two thousand and two, when you had a, a large area of annexation. Under state law at that time, your, your jurisdiction automatically extended. Now it does not automatically extend. You have to take some action to extend it, and you can only do that once a year. This is pretty nearly defined, I mean, this, this, this law was the result of a very specific case in Alabama. You had a municipality in Talia County that was extending its city limits and then extending their police jurisdiction on a regular basis, and folks were being taxed, which the city doesn't tax in the police jurisdiction. They're being taxed, and then they were being regulated under the building code and subdivision regulations many, many miles from the actual city, so.
But generally speaking, the, within the timeframe, a year is fairly manageable, isn't it?
It's reasonable. I, I don't think, it really is one of those that you just have to know that you have to do it.
Yeah.
Just, and from our standpoint, it's just going to give you a, a time on the calendar. We'll set a reminder sometime middle of the summer. We'll start looking at whether or not we need to make a change. We'll be set up for October to do that. That has not been an issue recently because the city council has, for the last five or so years, has not annexed much in the way of property. They have now started doing that again, or entertaining annexation requests. So it, it should be something we look at every year, but you just need to be aware of it.
Regarding annexation, that's a different subject altogether, but what kind of, what are the requests that city council adds?
Well, you, you've seen most of them because they've had corresponding zoning.
Right.
Request, and you will see those that don't have corresponding zonings, you'll see those come before you. So you have Glenbrook, another phase that's been, you have the horse de- excuse me, the Swan property on Old Farm Lane that has been annexed and now is being set for a, a zoning hearing. The petition, but in that case, the petitioner has requested that that be changed from R four to F A R. And the council appears to be receptive to that. They've set that for a hearing. You have the Davis property that's before you. I'm leaving one out. Small piece, which I call the Anderson property off of Canterbury twenty-nine. And I'm leaving out one more. Mr. McCauley, I apologize, but we'll get y'all a comprehensive list of those.
I was trying to remember them. Your memory is better than mine.
There, there will be others. There's a small piece that we're still working through. It's been requested off of Canterbury eighty-five, of Conestoga Wagon Trail. We're going to, we're attempting to get the rest of Glenbrook and some, the rest of Hollybrook in at the moment, so. Anyway.
Is Conestoga Wagon Trail in the, see, or? Part of it.
Yeah. What, what we had proposed from a staff level was a squared up city limits. That would have taken, the city council agreed to request that by the state legislature, and just too many, too much of a heavy lift this year, I think, to get that done. So we'll, we'll probably try to do that again. It would be helpful if we could have a squared up city limits from several perspectives, but. Mr. Chair, I apologize for taking so long. That's all I have today.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions for Mr. Duke? Meeting adjourned. I was ready.